I know, but there was.
There's more, okay, okay.
Oh, recording has started.
Oh, my.
Well, hey, good evening, everybody. If we can settle down a little bit, this is the City Council Workshop for the City of Bonny Lake, November 1st, 2022. First thing we do is salute the flag, so let's please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor McCullough.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember McLeimans.
Here.
Councilmember Swatman.
Present.
And Councilmember Watson.
Here.
All right, and before we begin, I don't know if any of y'all watched the show What's My Line or The Truth, but our panel has changed up on the on the dais for our workshop. We finally have Ms. Ryerson, Sherry Ryerson, our Chief Financial Officer, with us physically. It's very nice to have her. And we also have our new City Attorney General, Je- General, I don't know. We're at. Kate Robertson, who's joining us tonight as well, so.
You're welcome, welcome.
All right, so we'll begin with council open discussion. Councilmember Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, and was interested in joining me on Thursday at 3 o'clock. I got my community meets for families meeting down at Summer High School, an area down there, so if you'd like to come along, let me know. Think the chief might be there this time?
If I get out of firearm training, but I will try to be there.
Oh, that'd be great.
Chief, are you saying you don't know how to shoot a firearm?
Prove it, sir. I've been with him, that guy can shoot.
And also, I've been approached by the Big Give, and they're $15,000 short on monies to get with a huge demand this year. And I was reaching out to council, maybe we might be able to give them a $5,000 donation, which is a total large amount, maximum they give to them. The Lions Club will probably give them $5,000 also on Thursday night at our meeting, so I'd like to introduce some type of discussion that we could possibly do that.
What would anybody like to add to that discussion? Councilmember Baldwin.
In regards to the Big Give, is this some sort of charity organization, is my assumption?
501(c)(3).
Okay, and you're, you said that you want to have a discussion in regards to requesting five grand from the city or from?
I would like, I would like to give $5,000 from the city.
Okay.
To have it for our next meeting coming up, a regular council meeting, be approved for that. They have, as he says, with the needs high this year and some local support in less than previous years, Food Banks, we're trying to uncover more funds and support the community Big Give. We have a gap of around $15,000 in the next month. Are there any funds from the city that I can, that I should be approaching, anyone I should be approaching the city to assist this event from our main emergency management perspective due to inflation and influx of refugees in this area? 51% of the meals we deliver are tonight, 391. That's 750 meals at $35 apiece. And like I told you, I delivered meals last year, and now I know the meals, the need's out there. So I thought with our, and the food bank, the demand is ever increasing out there for them, next year we can be able to help the big.
Councilmember Watson, have we, have we contributed in the past, or would this be the first time?
We have not.
Okay. Councilmember Fullerton.
That was my question.
Oh, okay.
If this was a precedent, had been set, if we've given before.
Absolutely a great organization and a wealth.
I was wondering if I could direct our question to our new attorney, if she has any thoughts on it?
So whether you donate to a charity is obviously a council policy decision, but my recommendation is that you do so under a grant agreement to make sure that the funds are used in a way that meets the state constitution of no gifts of public funds, make sure that it's used for people who are in poverty, et cetera. So that's my recommendation, if the council desires to do so, I would just recommend that we do a grant agreement with the organization.
Ms. Robertson, would that be as an interlocal agreement with the company, or would that be like a memorandum of interest?
No, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be either. It would just be a typical grant agreement that they sign agreeing to use the funds, for example, for feeding for people in need, so, and they would accept them under those conditions that they use it.
Here's the picture of the Big Give at Walmart and take the entire parking lot of food donations.
If you've never been to the event, Joe, you'd just be blown away by the amount of food they produce.
EBL in giving food, as far as a community organization and effort. It won't be wasted, that's for sure. It's a good thing, and it helps so many people in our community, especially at the time of Thanksgiving, which is when it always takes place.
Oh, and Deputy Mayor Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've also participated with this event, is a wonderful organization and event that they put on, and thank you for asking on that. My question, I guess, would be to Ms. Ryerson, where would those funds come from? Where does that look like?
See, it comes back from this technical difficult.
Mike, that was supposed to be Ryan's mic. Hey, you had that one, come on now.
And just to state the obvious, but we as a city entity are able to give this to a 501(c)(3) organization.
Okay. School District isn't one of the bigger sponsors as well.
Oh, okay, very good. Do we have any further, oh, Councilmember Baldwin.
I guess I'll just state it for the record, but I am, I'm certainly not against charitable organizations, but this isn't something I would be able to support as far as government giving charitable funds, because I believe very strongly that it is not charity to reach into someone else's pocket and then give it to someone else. I think it's different if it's an individual decision, where you are giving of your own money to charitable organizations, which I completely support. I just think it's a different thing when government entities are attempting to donate, if you will, money to a charitable organization, because to me, that is not donating. It is, it is taking taxpayer money and then using it to then decide for them what they would, I guess, donate charitably. And so, again, I want to stress, I'm not against charitable organizations whatsoever, but I think you are treading on very fine lines when you take, when you use taxpayer money for charitable reasons.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Evans.
Just to counter that, this isn't unprecedented. We do that with labor and resources with Beautify Bonny Lake and the food, Food Bank as well, I believe.
I didn't agree with the Food Bank decision anyway, so.
We provide an entire house for Lions Club for kids, and that's a taxpayer-owned property as well as, as well as the Greater Historical Bonny Lake Society as well, so there, it's, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of charitable donations that the city has been a member of and participated in, either through time, labor, or, or actual financial contributions.
Okay, any further discussion on the matter?
I was just going to second what Mr. Evans said, that we've given the Food Bank in the past, and we have people in need in Bonny Lake, the need is out there, should participate in those programs. It's something that we're helping people out who are having a hard time out there. And if we'd be able to help them in the holiday time to get a turkey for their family when they can't afford it, I think it's great if the city can help out other people within our city that way, too. I understand your point, but that's.
Okay, and given the, given the discussion, procedurally, how would we go about it in to honor and use the advice that our new city attorney did give us on this? We need some time to be able to.
Well, we could certainly prepare an agenda bill for a motion of the council to authorize the funds subject to the terms and conditions of a grant agreement.
Should this go on a committee at any point?
I don't know when the deadline is for.
The event is on the 19th.
Of November? Okay, and Councilmember Fullerton.
Since we don't typically vote on workshop days, I would suggest that we make a motion to put this on a council agenda, or maybe next week. That way, we have time to kind of consider and think about it, and then we can vote on it if we want to, if, if the funds are available, and if we decide to use the funds to, to go towards the Big Give, then that can be voted on next week.
And Madam Parliamentarian, that, I know we're using you a lot today, but, so do we have to have a motion within a workshop to be able to put it on the agenda, or can we just do it?
I think you can just do it. I think the council direction's pretty clear, that you want this to come back for discussion next week, to tee it up, to vote next week on whether to make the donation subject to a grant agreement.
On full council issues for next week.
Yeah, you can vote tonight, but I don't think you need to.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any, any other open discussion that we have? Oh, Councilmember Baldwin.
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on just a couple of things in regards to the wastewater treatment plant kind of discussions we've been having, and also with water. Obviously, those of us that were here last week, we heard from citizens, and we know that that's not the first time we've heard those things from citizens. And again, just, I guess, just trying to, you know, pick it back up and trying to figure out if there are alternative ways and of saving money to the citizens. I think one of the questions I have is, during the AWC conference, there was a company there that I had spoken with, Amaresco, and I believe I had given you the information, Mayor, in regards to just a public-private partnership. They did create a biogas, which converted, it converted biogas into energy, which then caused some rev, created revenue, but that wasn't the actual wastewater treatment plan. And in my conversations with Amaresco, they did mention that there was a possibility of there being a public-private partnership in regards to having a wastewater treatment facility built. And so I just, I wanted to follow up with that. I gave you the information, I just don't know if anything came of that, or if I should follow back up with them, or if anybody's heard of any kind of public-private partnership like that.
It, I haven't followed up with it yet, because as everybody else has, we've been waiting for the rate study to be done, and November 15th is when we should be hearing about the rate study, which is two weeks from tonight. And so, that's, that's what I've been waiting for, to see how we can, how we can, may be able to move it in. But yes, it's something that we do need to consider, you know, in looking outside the box for, for any way that we can get these rates down.
Okay.
Okay, any, any discussion on the matter? Any commentary? Councilmember McLeimans.
Yeah, when it comes to like reducing the water rates, the sewer rates are a little more complicated with the water rates, I think we really have to figure that out. I'm going to be hard-pressed to support a rate increase, just because we hired a contractor that told us, guess what, we have to increase our rates, right? I, I have ideas on how to lower the rates, right? I'm not sure a lot of people like my ideas, but if we can't come up with others, then, you know, the city can sell assets and pay off debts and lower, lower our obligations to lower water bills. We can do that. That's within our power. That's probably not what we want to do, but that's one idea that we can do to lower water rates, and, and why would we do that? Well, if we are at an abnormal spot when it comes to our water rates as compared to communities around us, then I think something like that might make sense.
Yeah.
Right?
Oh, and absolutely, I believe, flush it out and see exactly what, as, as a possibility.
Right. Yeah, I'm not the brightest guy in the room, and I'm sure other people who are more experienced can come up with good things.
Councilmember McLeimans, we only have until 9 o'clock, we can't discuss that.
See?
Anybody else? Anything further? Councilmember Baldwin.
Has there ever been a conversation, I guess, in regards to, you know, what Councilmember McLeimans is mentioning in, in selling assets and, you know, trying to lower some of the debt that we have?
That I would have to direct to our, our members who've been on, on the council for a while. This is, I haven't heard it proficiently.
Didn't we talk about it at the retreat when we had it?
We discussed surplus property.
We discussed the surplus property and what we could do about selling that off and making it into industrial areas or whatever.
Councilmember Swatman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah. And so, obviously, when the rate study comes back, hopefully the council will dig into that and, you know, take those options into account, because there are many different options and philosophies out there. I'm really aimed at trying to get our rates to be comparable to our surrounding entities, because, you know, I don't really have a thing about where our rates are, as long as they match reasonable other utilities, because I don't like a conversation when somebody's trying to say, my water bill is X and my water bill is Y, you know, and it's still water, right, per se, there's differences in topography and stuff, but we had a short discussion at the CDC tonight, where our water rates, our basic water rates are pretty close to the surrounding areas, you know? It's some of the tiers and some of the stuff, that's, that's the decisions that'll, in the rate study, that you'll have to look at really hard. Kind of like, do you want multiple tiers, and on the sewer side, there's volumetric pieces to it and all those kind of things, but there's options there, you know? Again, my contention is to get to an area where our rates are similar to our neighbors, because as Councilmember McLeimans points out, you had a study done, which we suspect is going to demonstrate why you need to increase your rates? That's, that's easy to do. It's hard to say that, well, wait a minute, you know, our target is a haircut costs $20, and why do a haircut in Bonny Lake cost $40, when I can get it for $20 in Sumner? You know, there, there's a problem there, and it's like, well, we cut hair that much better in Bonny Lake than we do in Sumner? You not know, I'm going down to.
You know, it's the topography.
Yeah, yeah.
Your hair is higher.
The topography, right, yeah. So those, that's the hard, but, so it's different philosophies, but it'll be interesting when, hopefully, the council will really drill into that, because there's a lot of numbers in there.
No, and I, I believe.
That'll be a challenge.
I mean, I certainly can't speak for everybody, but I, I think we're all of a common mind when it comes to, to that. And as we've talked about, you know, we do exchange the terminology and say water rates on this, but really, when it comes down to it, the big distinction is with our sewer rates, and, and that's one that we really need to study. Anything further? Councilmember Baldwin.
I'm so sorry I keep talking today, but.
No, love it.
In ordering the rate study, I guess the whole, I feel like the whole point of it was for just kind of general analytics. It was, it was just kind of an overall scope, to be able to just see what's going on. I don't know that the rate study is, was the purpose of it to then ask them ways in which we can cut costs, or is it just for general analysis? Because, because I feel like if it's for general analysis, they're going to come back and say exactly what you just said.
Well, that's the only way you ever do a study, and I got in extraordinarily trouble one time in, in a meeting, not here, in a different political meeting, when I told them, well, of course, the study's going to tell you the answer you want.
You've gotten in trouble in other places.
Yeah, believe it or not, other, other political meetings, because that's why you do a study, to generate the answer that you want. You don't like do a study to give you information generally.
No, absolutely. Ms. Ryerson, I was actually going to, to ask, but she raised her hand and has a comment on it.
Stick myself out there. So when we hire FCS, they're accountants, right? So they're doing essentially what, the number crunching. They put in what we tell them are the needed projects, which you're going to go over tonight, and you'll be able to kind of look and, you know, ask Ryan questions on projects and the need, and, you know, get those questions answered. Maybe Jason will answer some of them. But we've asked them two things this time, so they, they put all that together, and they come back and they go, okay. And we actually just had a discussion with them today. So they're going to come back and say, Councilmember McLeimans, you talked about selling property. If we took the 4.2 million of ARPA, what will that do to the rates? Because we're trying to figure out a way, we've heard you, and so we've also tasked them with that. We're asking them, if we put out debt, what's that going to do to the rates? We're trying everything we can based upon what's being presented to you tonight in the CIP. That's the information that they are building their rates off of. If you pass everything in the CIP and everything is needed, then these are the rates you'll need to maintain that. That will be on the 15th. We've then tasked them with part two, which is to look at our rates and change the structure. We also heard you guys talking about how you'd like to see it differently, and eliminating the summer structure and some different things. So they will come back once you guys decide, you know, what the rates look like, whether or not you want to accept some debt in the future to hopefully minimize some of the rate increases, and then they'll come back a couple of weeks after that and do a presentation on the different structures to get that amount of money. Does that help?
Mm-hmm, it does, yeah.
Okay, any further comment? Okay, did we have any further discussion in open discussion? Okay, let's move on. Okay, so now we have the review of council minutes. Councilmember Watson, since we have a change in the dais right here, should I go to somebody else, or?
I found a few corrections that have been made, taken care of.
Thank you, Councilmember Watson. And, all right, let's go on to our first discussion item on the 2023 to 2024 biannual budget public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions or discussion about this?
I can kick it off real quick.
Okay.
Typically, there's not a lot of discussion around the budget, once we've presented the decision parts, obviously, there was, I think that might be my interference here, there was no presentations at the public hearing, no questions, so there's none of that to address. Everything in the budget pretty much rolls over year after year, with the exception of the decision parts, which you've all had a.
Will do.
Which you've all had an, an opportunity to look at and discuss. So if you have questions, I'm willing to answer them or explain anything. Outside of that, the main topic tonight would be the CIP topics, the items on that, which are included, for the most part, in your budget. If they're not, Jason will let you know, or if the amount is changed in his presentation, he'll also let you know that. A couple of items have changed a little bit.
And Ms. Ryerson, it was brought to my attention that when I've asked questions, that its meaning has been taken a little bit in a different way, but when, just to remind people who are watching this outside of what we're doing, we say CIP and everything, we bandy about those terms all the time. If you could say it once, and then we can go.
The capital improvement program, so Jason will be presenting that to you tonight. It's the five different funds and the capital projects associated to water sewer storm, parks, and streets.
All right, thank you. All right. Now we're going to move on to discussion of AB 22160, Resolution, Resolution 3102 for the 2023, 2024 Capital Improvement Program. Mr. Johnson, can you, or John Stone, I keep on doing that. One of these days, I am going to say Flintstone.
It's been, it's happened before.
But if you could start us off, please.
Yeah, and actually, I'm going to directly turn it over to Jason. He's put a lot of work in the past couple of days as part of his planning duties, putting together this capital improvement plan for the next six years, based on input from our engineering division, from operations, from myself and Sherry, and we've got a great plan here, he'll step you through what the results are of that work, and if you have any questions, feel free to fire away.
All right, so, hold it, everyone can hear me. So the Capital Improvement Plan is not a spending authorization document, it is a plan of government expenditures that were required to have by state law over a six-year period. So the first two years of the Capital Improvement Plan gets pulled into the budget, and that's what actually gives the authorization to spend money. Approving the CIP does not authorize anybody to spend money until it's incorporated into the budget, which we do every two years. So the CIP is to identify, as I said, all capital expenditures associated revenues for the next six years. It is a requirement of the Growth Management Act. We, it's required to be financially balanced, which means that when we get to the end of the six-year period, we have to at least show zero. We don't have to show a gain, but we do need to at least show that it's zero. It's not, as I said, it's not an authorization to spend any city funds. We update the CIP every two years to cover and sign with the budget update, and then, as I said, the first two years get rolled into the budget, which is what is author, which is what is authorizing this spending, this spending of funds. So we'll just kind of walk through this. We gave you the full CIP, it's a little different of a document this year, because one of the things that we heard was, what do these lines and text mean? So we gave you a much larger document that walks through each individual specific project. I'm not going to do that, I'm just going to walk through the summary table, and then I can answer any questions that we have. As you can see, it's broken down by, by biennium, not by each year, because we are looking at it as a biennium program. So for the Water Fund, you'll see there, there's projects listed for '23, '25 through '26, and '27 through '28. The ones that are be, are proposed to be incorporated into the budget are the completion of the Compass Point Reservoir, there's still a little bit of work that needs to be done for the construction project, so that's a rollover from last year, and about $200,000 for the demolition of the old tank. There's the Cedar View Water Main, Water Main Replacement Program. This project is in there, but it would only be done if we got the federal, the federal authorization of funds, which was, which was a grant that was in one of the federal legislations. We haven't confirmed that we've received all those funds. The project is shown, and so is the revenue. If the revenue doesn't happen, the project doesn't.
Mr. Sullivan, may I stop you there for just a second, because I was curious about that. We did have Representative Schreier, who did state that it was confirmed, but I haven't heard anything since then. Have we received any of those funds yet, or when are we expecting?
So I've reached out to Representative Schreier's office, because when we were reviewing this, this was House Resolution 7776, I believe is what it's called. When we went to look at that, the text of the original bill does include $3 million in funding as an appropriation to the City of Bonny Lake for this, as well as dry sewer installation in Cedar View, which you'll see here in a minute. However, there was an amendment to the bill, and it looks as though the entire, other than the first page of the document, everything else was amended, and I do not see the City of Bonny Lake included in there, in that amended bill. So I have asked that question of Representative Schreier's office, I'm waiting to hear back. Always welcome, sir.
Thank you. The other one, the other water project that's in the next biennium is the, the Granger Springs Upgrade. This is one of our sources for water. It's a, it's a, it's basically a spring that comes out below Sky Island that's used to provide water to the city. There's needed some, needed updates to both the building and, and some of the, the treatment systems. There's some new hydroxy tanks, and I'm gonna let, if there's a technical question, I'll let the experts talk to that. A new reservoir for 810, I believe, my understanding too, is that this new reservoir for 810 is required by the Department of Health, or Ecology?
Department of Health.
Department of Health, because we're shortage deficient, storage deficient. So right now, we don't have enough storage capacity for our existing water system, and so this tank is required in order to meet our Department of Health requirements, in order to maintain our water system. There's the Victor Falls metering improvement, and a telemetry upgrade, and a unilateral flushing program. As you can see, there's a number of projects in both '25 and '26 and '27, '28. The big walk away from the Water Fund, I guess, if, if there was any, is, one, we did include the sale of the Compass Point property in the ending fund balance. We also put in, there's approximately of the rates that the city collects, about $1.5 million in, in the rates that go to capital. The city actually collects about $20 million in rates, 19 million of that goes to ongoing operational expenses, so there's about a million and a half in the next biennium that can go to capital. The, the, the current CIP does not include, does not any assume any rate increases between '23 and '28. You do see the rates get higher in '25, in the '25, '26 biennium, and the '27 and ' '28 biennium, because in those bienniums, we actually have debt service that gets paid off the, the biennium prior, so when the debt service gets paid off, your operating expenses go down. This also assumes that we put all of the remaining ARPA funds into the Water Fund. In order to do the projects that we need to do, based on the revenues that we're expecting to include the, the ARPA funds, the Water Fund goes broke in the '26, the '27 through '28 biennium. So in order to approve the CIP, which we don't plan on doing until January, we're going to have to find either additional revenues or some way to balance that, that fund out, because it basically goes out to, you have a negative 3, $3.4 million balance in the '27, '28 biennium. the 27, 28 biennium.
Oh, Councilmember Swat.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, kind of odd to me, of course, because the projects of note in the water fund there, you know, they're associated with project IDs, so they're, they're in the comp plan that we got certified, is my assumption. You know, they're, meaning that those are identified projects that are in our water comp plan that was approved by the Department of Health, Department of wherever, Department of Washington State.
That's a bit too.
Not, not, not easily, like, you just can't simply say that you're not going to do these projects because the Department of Health or whatever is going to come back and have a problem with your water plan at that point. You may be able to move them around a little bit, I would think. One of those projects, the new hydroxy tanks, doesn't have a project ID associated with it? Does that mean it was an add or something like that?
That is correct. It was a, it was a project that was added after the comp plan was updated.
Okay, that's fine. I was wondering, though, question, because when we put the comp plan together with our rates or whatever, you know, I don't believe that we knew that we were going to get $4 million worth of ARPA funds at that point. So it seems kind of strange to be in some kind of a situation where there's a gigantic budget shortfall unless we use ARPA funds that we didn't know about back then.
We didn't know.
Yeah, but $4 million worth of, you know, there were the projects aligned a little bit differently at some point.
He did not. Thank you, Tom. I'll share with you. We did not adopt what FCS told us we would need for the next four years, I believe it was. We came up with our own of what we could make work for the interim.
Oh, okay.
We kicked some projects down the road that needed to be done.
We're still shuffling things around and moving projects around.
But I believe we implemented like 4% and 5% instead of the 8% and 9% that they were initially asking for. I can go back and get those numbers for you and send it out to the entire council, but yeah.
And correct me if you, correct me if you were wrong, but we did not do our planned rate increase in January 1 of 2022. This council decided to not do a water rate increase in January of this year.
Right. And then the other part of that, too, is the, when they put the estimates together back in 2016, no one, no one expected the rate of inflation.
They didn't use a 10% inflation rate?
Yeah, so the, these, these are current costs for projects based on current construction cost. And so as I, as I mentioned, the, the water CIP isn't balanced, so in order to adopt the CIP, we're going to have to figure out either revenue, loans, grants, projects, there's, there's options. We're not asking the council to explore those tonight. That's something that's going to have to be explored. We're going to wait to hear the discussion on the, the rate analysis, because I think that's going to be part of it. But we wanted to, we at least wanted to draw your attention to the fact that, basically, if everything remains a status quo, and that assumes that the, that up to, in the next two bienniums, up to $3.5 million of rates are going into the capital side, you spin down your entire balance in the water fund, and you're actually $3.4 million in the hole by 2028. In order, so, so something has to.
Racing parks to the bottom.
Yeah, something has to give somewhere. Because, as I said, the only reason it's balanced between 23, 24, and then 25 through 26 is because in 25 through 26, you basically spin down your ending fund balance to almost zero.
Right.
And really, 25, 26. But we have a.
Yeah. Basically, as, at the end of, at the end of this next budget, you're, and I'll, I'll update that to show the, and I knew that was common, I just didn't know what it was yet. I will update this to show the reserve as a negative, which means that by the end of this biennium, in the next biennium, your, your water fund is running in the negative.
When you say take down to zero our ending fund balance, you're not talking to general fund, right?
No, we're talking water fund.
Okay, I had your question. I had one more real quick, though. Granger Springs, isn't that building like six years old?
So you, you have two buildings out at Granger Springs. You have the treatment plant, which sits up above on the hill, above where the actual pump house is. This is for the pump house building, which is actually on the order of about 60 to 70 years old.
Oh, okay.
It's down at the bottom of the hill at the toe of the slope.
Okay.
I asked this last time we went through this, and their project said, I'm questioning why we really need to do them. Are there some projects not required by the state that we can put off till later on, help save us some dollars being spent? Help balance out the budget? Because last time you said there's not, they have to be done, but could these be looked a little bit harder and make sure we have to spend all this money in all these projects?
What I would, how I would respond to that is these projects have already been evaluated, and the determination's been made that we do need to do these projects. We need to move them forward. Some of these have been delayed from recommendations made in previous, in the previous water system plans. So we're at a point where some of these projects, we've just put them off and put them off, and now everything's compressing. And so by putting off and kicking, kicking can down the road on some of these projects, we've actually exacerbated our problems. So we're at a point where these projects have to get done so that we can, one, get the improvements done so that we can ensure the safe delivery of clean drinking water to our citizens, and two, so that we can get them off the books. Because right now, we're creating a burden here that, that had they been completed at a more regular interval and on time, I don't believe we'd be experiencing.
Mr. Johnson. When you say clean drinking water for or, I mean, I understand it's potable and everything, but isn't there a rating system?
There, there's no, I mean, it depends on what it is you're looking at when it comes to drinking water. The easiest answer here is that our drinking water meets all requirements that are required under the Clean Water Drinking Act, meets every requirement the state puts forward that we need to meet in order to have our water considered safe to drink. So we could certainly dive deeper into that at some point if there was, you know, particular things, if we're looking at, you know, different contaminants and things of that sort. Certainly, it gets down into the, into the weeds as far as different chemicals and how much you're allowed to have in parts per billion even, and we could take a look at that. But at this point, I would just say we meet all the requirements that we need to be meeting in order to have safe water for our citizens.
All right, good. And last question before, Councilmember. When you talk about our requirement to have this balance, this is my first biennial cycle. My, my assumption with that is that we have to have this balanced by the end of December, when the, when the biennium.
Not, not the CIP. So.
Oh, okay.
The budget has to be adopted by December, which is the first two years, which is why that we have that resolution instead of the ordinance tonight, which basically says, take the first two years of the CIP, put it in the budget. That way Sheri can finish up the budget document and be approved by December. The CIP is a little bit more loadable, and so what we're looking at now is having it come back in January for adoption. And we, and for us to be balanced just means it has to be zero, because we know that we're looking six years out, and a lot can change in those six years, and we'll go through those whole exercises again in two years. And so right now, based on the, the bond requirement that we'll have to put in, we're going to have to start making changes so that from the 25 and future biennium, we're at least at zero, because right now, we're going to be at negatives for 25 and 26 and 27 people.
And when you say bond requirement, I'm sorry, I said two questions. I always lie.
For our debt service, there's an amount of money that we have to retain in those accounts that we can't spin below.
Okay.
Are basically by those agreements, and Sheri was telling me it's a half a million dollars. So I have to, for all of these ending fund balances, I need to put a deduct in of a half a million dollars for bond hold, and that would change what we have in these bienniums for expenditure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Councilmember Watson.
For Sheri, Sheri, why don't we use a debt service to reduce our money that's going out to help? What about us using a debt service to help reduce the money going out all at once?
Yes.
To help reduce our rates that way, too?
Absolutely.
Be a great way to go.
I've talked to FCS about.
Councilmember Baldwin, I saw your, your.
Yes, you did. Sorry, I was just catching kind of the tail end of what you were saying. So Sheri, are you saying that there is a possibility of then incurring, I guess we would be borrowing money then? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, you could borrow money to complete these projects, and so then you'd only be paying on the debt service every year. Debt service, depending on the project, would range anywhere from 20 years to 30 years. We have a lot of debt, as Jason alluded to, dropping off in 2025, 2026. There's public work trust fund loans, I believe, are still available. There's loans through the bank we can get without having to go out for a bond. A bond will cost us a little more. A loan is a lot less complicated, and I think your cheapest option would be a trust fund loan if we can get those. I believe they only open up once a year, though.
That's correct, and there's several other sources. Another big one is the drinking water state revolving fund. So there are resources out there available to us if we wanted to take advantage of that.
And our rating is good enough to be able to, okay.
As long, as long as we were to do it while we still have money, yes, our rating is By us going out for certain loans, a bond for sure, you'd have to do another rate, rating, which is very time consuming, and it could change your rating at that point. I did a surveillance rating call with the Standard and Poor's about two or three months ago, and they have not recommended anything change at this point.
Oh, okay.
And you would have, just based on current rates, in the next biennium, the 25, 26 biennium, you would have about $1 million a year to pay toward debt service based on retiring debt. And then in the 27 through 28 biennium, you would have $2 million to pay on debt service, because you have retiring debt service. So you, you could take out more debt and use the current rates to pay for that debt, and your operating budget would remain the same if I said that right.
You know, we can start talking, as long as you are okay with the CIP the way it is for the two years, like Jason said, he'll approach the rest in January. Once we have the discussion with FCS in two weeks, we can also then talk about how much you're willing to put out to a loan or debt. Obviously, the more debt you incur, your rates may be able to stay the same.
And Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, so I was looking, kind of looking ahead today and going into the sewer as well. So between the two water and sewer capital improvement programs, we're looking at not 36 million, but we're actually looking around $62 million. So are we going to look into a debt service loan for that full 62 million? Or are we just looking ahead to two years?
So I'll give you the same spoiler alert I gave you, I think it was two or three weeks ago. Your sewer rates are looking okay, according to FCS, so I don't think we're going to need to incur any debt at this time for sewer. It's the water we're really concerned about, as well as stormwater.
Okay, so we don't have to make all of the improvements for the sewer?
No, the improvements are still needed. It's just the rates are able to.
Support it.
To support it, yeah.
We're talking about the sewer, the sewer I say I can mount. Two seconds, as soon as.
Okay, yeah, I'm just kind of looking ahead at all of the money that we're talking about and trying to kind of figure it out in my head.
And Councilmember, this doesn't solve anything by taking out debt. It just, it, gee, it just makes it longer, right? And then, and now not only are we incurring more debt, we're putting that interest of that debt onto our people that is going to come due first, and at some point, the rates will have to change to support that debt in the future. So it, I mean, I just want to make sure I'm clear. This is not a solution. This is just a option for, this is taking out a credit card to pay off your other credit card.
You could look at it that way, or you could also look at it like, I know the council tolerance hasn't been real high on debt in the past, but if you'll indulge me a moment, you can look at it kind of like, how long am I going to own my home? Well, I hope I'm going to go buy a home and own it for 30 years, and I want to pay for it over the life of the home. So same with these projects. They're paying, the citizens would be paying for it over the life of the project, instead of, say, Ryan comes up here, plans to only live here five years and sell his house, and now all of a sudden, his rates are really high, and he's having to pay for this project, and he's not going to experience the benefit of a 30-year project, right? 30-year useful life of the project. So you can kind of look at it both ways. I wouldn't recommend you put all of this out to a debt service. I, I think you need to balance that tolerance.
Does this go against our, our debt cap on our general fund, or is this enterprise fund set?
Enterprise, yeah. It'd be for the enterprise, and they're both rated separately.
Okay. Oh, good. Councilmember Baldwin.
Yeah, I guess I definitely echo your sentiment. I feel the same way, even with the explanation. I do appreciate that, Sheri. It does make it sound, I guess, not as terrible, but still feels very much like you're taking a credit card and you're paying off the other one. So I guess my question then is, I know that we're in the 3.4. I can't really see the red, but you guys keep saying it, so I'm assuming that's what it says. But then I guess if the ARPA funds didn't exist, kind of like what Councilmember Swatman was saying, then really, we were looking at a potential 7.6 million deficit. Am I looking at that correctly?
Yeah.
And I know you're saying we're not deciding things right now, but there's still projections.
Yeah, so the, the resolution right now, that we're asking the council to vote on next week, because it is important for the budget, is directing the remaining ARPA funds, the 4.2 million in ARPA funds, to the water fund in the next biennium. Yes, if you don't direct the wa, the, the ARPA funds, you're down to a $5 million ending fund balance this year, and by the end of 2028, you're closer to $8 million.
I guess the reason why I'm asking these questions is because, did this just all sneak up on us and suddenly, you know, oh, look, you owe lots of money?
No, it was, it was.
Or you're in, you're in the negative.
It's, it's based on, it's based on, like, as was mentioned earlier, when we did the last rate study, when we did the water system plan, the council didn't adopt the rates that FCS recommended, so we've been collecting less money than what was recommended to support the capital projects that were in the water system plan. So that's part of it, is that the rates that FCS said you need to have in order to support the capital size, because part of your rates go to capital, we didn't adopt. And so you're, we started from the council taking, at that time, taking a lower rate, which meant that we were collecting less money, which eventually means the projects would outstrip the revenue. That was one. The second one is the record inflation that no one saw coming in 2016, when we adopted the, the water system plan. Everybody assumes conservatively typically a 4% growth in cost, when inflation's typically around 2%. Everybody's seen the nose. We're seeing upwards of 8% to 9% cost, and then we have supply chain shortage, which makes things even more expensive. So you've kind of got a double whammy. You have the past decision of lower rates and not collecting high enough revenues in the past, historically, coupled with increased cost.
And no rate increases.
And no rate increases based on those increased of costs.
Deputy Mark Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of this goes back a long ways, back to 2008 or whatnot with the recession and not adjusting rates at that time. When I first got here in 2018, we had a discussion about this exact same thing, and we had to raise rates at that time. And then here recently, we basically stopped the, the automatic raising of that rate. Is that correct? Yeah. So we've kind of kicked the can down the road for a long time, even before us, and, and now we've, we've kind of continued to do that. My concern is the same as yours with debt service or whatnot. I'm generally against having debt, and the city having debt and stuff. This may be appropriate at this time, I don't know, as a balanced type of deal, but I'm very concerned about that. I'm concerned also about just wanting to kick the can down the road anymore. Eventually, we have to pay for services. You have to pay for stuff to get it built, and we're going to end up having to do it at some point. We can stretch it out and make people pay for it forever, or we can just, you know, get up there and take care of business. It's not the popular thing to do, right? To be there, yeah, I'm the one that raised rates or something, but at some time, we have to be responsible for what we do here for the city.
And before we proceed, the question that I have with this on the capital side of things, we have our one project that we talked about tonight, to where we're replacing something that is 60 to 70.
Unfortunately.
Correct. What is our percentage of that? How, how much infrastructure or improvement do, do we have? How how much uh infrastructure or improvement do do we have at that level to where we're looking to replace um uh facilities that are sixty to seventy years old in in our city?
I, you know, I would say that as far as age is concerned, Granger is one of the oldest components of our of our uh water system. It's, it was at one time the primary source of water for the city. Uh, it has served the city well for a long, long time. And this is an improvement that is one of those that I mentioned earlier that's been put off for several cycles as other things instead got got put in front of it. Um, so it's uh as far as age is concerned, I'd say it's it's an outlier. It's probably one of the older components that has yet to see any upgrade work done to it. Uh, so it's, it's, you know, I'd say it's fairly rare. And we don't have a lot of infrastructure that is all that age that is going to be coming due for replacement or upgrade.
Okay, so taking the age out of it, do we have any that we're looking at that simply needs to be replaced uh because of neglect or because we're kicking the can down the road and not doing projects? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how um the, what kind of situation we're in.
Yeah, and and basically, as you look down the the list here of projects, all of those minus the new hydroxide tanks are replacements or upgrades due to age, time and service, capacity, and so on.
Okay.
And I would say also, when it comes to the debt service, one way to think about it too is some of these projects have fifty, sixty year lifespans on them. So right now, all the water tanks are coming due, right? Like that, those water tanks that we built in the sixty, seventies and eighties are coming due. So as you replace those, your next water system plan that we do, keep our fingers crossed, shouldn't having the need to do more water tanks because we're already doing those water tanks during this group. Am I explaining that right?
Yeah, we're, we're, we'll use that as an example since we're, uh, the reservoirs, for instance, those are the two big heavy hitter projects you see across the the next two bienniums. Those are uh projects are on here because of the fact that we are, what Jason mentioned earlier, storage deficient. There's a long explanation behind that and go into it if you like, but suffice it to say, we don't have enough water stored in our tanks to get water to people to drink and put out a fire and also equalize our water during peak flow periods. Um, we don't, we don't have enough in the reservoirs to supply all that. So if we are required to have additional storage to meet that. We have had reservoirs that needed seismic upgrades and that have been replaced. Tacoma Point is an example of one that's old, wasn't really suited to the system anymore due to uh hydra, uh, the elevation that of the uh customers in the system versus the uh water elevation in the tank doesn't supply adequate pressure into the into the distribution system. So there's a myriad of reasons why these projects are on here, but all of those reasons make it necessary to have them replaced.
Yeah, I definitely don't doubt any of the needs at all. I know that um infrastructure, especially over time, is just continuously aging and obviously population changes. So that's, I guess that's not where my issue is. I think um I'm just thinking of just regular budgeting and just what you're doing at home. And I know the city is much more complex, but you know, you are thinking about these things down the road. You're, you're putting aside money for these things. You're moving money around when you have a shortfall in groceries, for example, or gas. And and even when the people were up here and they were talking about it, they were challenging us as a city and asking us if we were being good stewards of their money. And I think that's where my question then says, okay, I I see that there is a shortfall here, just like if there was a shortfall in um, you know, one of our regular budgets, for example. Like, is there not a way that we can't move money around or look? I'm not asking you, you guys don't deal with that. I know that, but I just, my, my question is, you know, obviously, we're going to know that you're going to have to fix infrastructure down the road. You're going to, I don't know. I just, I don't understand why we can't just move money around.
Okay, so we we can kind of answer that.
Sure.
So I I I think there's, there's kind of two parts of it. Two, as Councilmember, I mean, Deputy Mayor Carter alluded to, there were some decisions made in the past to bait in the recession when water rates should be increasing to cut rates. So that put the city behind the eight ball, and that was a decision that was made by the council at that time.
We didn't cut rates in the recession.
And then there was a decision not to adopt.
What, we did not cut rates in the recession.
Okay, not to do the increase. I apologize. You're correct.
Okay.
It was a decision.
I remember Hamilton and had, I thought there was a significant rate cut in sewer.
It might have been sewer. So it's, there was, there was, there was messing with rates during the recession that didn't follow the program.
That, we did not do a programmed increase or something like that last, was it last year or the year before?
That was, that was one.
For the water.
Yes, we scheduled an eight and a half percent increase in January first.
Right, in the water.
In water, that we did not do this year.
Right.
And then in, and then in twenty eighteen or twenty ten, when the FCS, when the FCS.
Yeah, so why, you know, here's, you know, there's a reason I haven't talked, right? You know, why didn't we do that increase? The the last one, if we just go back to the easy one, we're all sitting around the table. We're all here. Why didn't we do that increase?
I I'd have to turn to the council on that one, but I wanted to answer.
No, 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 no. But how do we turn to the council? Because the problem is, right? The the council did that. The council does legislative actions. They do those kind of things. And then where was everybody else? Where was the professionals that we depend on the daily running these systems to say, hey, you can't do that?
So can, before we go to that question, can I just answer question, Councilmember Baldwin's question about moving funds around? The challenge with all of your CIPs, especially water uh and sewer, are they enterprise funds? So you can't just take money from one and put it to the other. You can loan money between funds, but you have to pay interest to the other funds. So you can't, you can't, it's not like our checking accounts at home where we can move money between our savings and everything because they're, they're basically distinct entities. So you can take money from, say, Fund Y, but it has to be a loan to the water fund, and then you have to pay Fund Y back with interest.
And it's the loan that you establish in the water and the sewer fund are in reality a single fund we happen to account for separately.
So um to answer part of your question, i- if you think of it like your house, right? You you don't pre-save all that money and then go buy a five hundred thousand dollar home. Um, and so that's why I'm suggesting that we possibly look at debt because you pay for that over time, over the use of your asset. Um, so that's kind of the theory behind it. Um, we've elected not to do that for many years, and we've tried to do things on a cash. You know, if we have money, we we buy it. Um, it's not working out so well. So unless we incurred debt, that rate is going to have to go up. Um, and to answer y- your question, uh, Councilmember Swatman, um, we did have that discussion about what to do, and the customers were really complaining. And we said, hey, let's do a rate study, and that's where we're at. So we didn't do the increase, recommended that we do a rate study again because we knew, you know, things were kind of wonky with some projects in COVID, and we kind of wanted to see where we're at. Now we're learning that. We're, we're figuring out where we're at. I would recommend you do another rate study in another four or five years and kind of continue on to do these every so often so that you can make sure you're on track.
Right, and we always have to do that, right? So it wasn't like we knew that there were multimillion dollar projects coming down the pike that we weren't going to have funding for. You know what I'm saying, right? There, the professionals were not telling us, don't do these decreases or increases or whatever you want to call them. You know, the professionals that we depend upon were saying, okay, you know, that's a legislative action. You can do that. We were not kicking the can down the road. And that's what really irritates me about the whole situation, right? There's a, there's a comprehensive plan that we approved, and there's rates that have to support that kind of thing when we went through that situation. You know, we didn't say as a legislative body, oh, wait, we'll worry about that later. We had a rate structure there that supported the comp plan. So great discussion, but to say kicking it down the road and to say that we were ignoring something is just not accurate.
Yes, in history, we have done this so many times where they told us to have a certain rate, and we've taken less. Before my time, when there was last recession, we brought down help assistance of Bonnie Lake. We did it earlier, ten years ago, the same problem. We have not gone to, gone to the rates, excuse me, they have suggested. So we're playing catch up from all the past rate increases, and that's on record. And then changing the rates has been us changing them. They've told us what we should spend, have. Like the last time, they said ten percent, and I convinced the council and a few other people to go down to the four percent, something like that. And that's a problem that's costing us heavily down the road. That's our problem.
But again, you know, keep in mind that we are not in a position to know exactly all the particulars of the daily operation, you know? We depend on our professionals to say, you can't do that. If my boss comes to me and says that I need you to cut you twenty percent out of your budget, I'm going to be saying, well, I can't do X, Y, and Z, right? You know, and then he's going to say, I don't care.
They can't raise that, then they're going to do what we tell them to do. And then we're going to have to deal with.
No, 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 but see, they're, they're, you're missing a part of the conversation where they're not saying, hey, you know what? I cannot run a water system for this, right? That's what you're lacking is my contention, you know? I need the professionals to tell me that you can't run this because, again, back to why our water rates are so significantly different than other peers. If we can't run our operations that are like ratable and peer reviewed, like we shouldn't be running a water system if we have to have rates that are twice as much as our surrounding entities.
Okay, uh, Ms. Robinson, you did, you did want to respond to that, and then Deputy Mr. Carter.
Yep, real quick. So when we did the last rate study, I think we started it in twenty seventeen and didn't adopt any rates until twenty eighteen. So at that point, these twenty seven, twenty eight projects wouldn't have been on their radar. They only look at so many years, FCS. Um, so now we're hitting a new biennium. These are on their radar. So you're going to constantly add projects to this, right? I'm not looking at twenty nine, thirty right now, and I don't believe any of us are. Um, so we can't tell you what's going to happen in the future and if there's going to be some big, major project that comes down.
Okay, Deputy Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I I just agree with uh Councilmember Watson as far as kind of how we got here, essentially. Um, and I think we would all know if we say, hey, we have to take less, uh, make the rate lower, some projects are going to get cut. Somebody has to come up with something like, okay, well, we can't do X then uh because you're telling us that. And their job is to tell us, hey, this is what we would like. This is what we think we can do. But ultimately, when we tell them what the rate is, that's the rate. As as you said before, like, we're the ones that tell them that. So they have to kind of go by with whatever we tell them. Thank you.
I think it's important to note that your operations are supporting itself. It's the capital that is not. So that's why I'm suggesting debt. I'm not suggesting debt to pay for any sort of operations, just your capital. Um, and when you go out for loans like that, they will absolutely have parameters on them on what you can spend the money on. And if you don't, then you either have to return or to get authorization to spend it on a different project.
Hey, Councilmember. Uh, you know, going back to the credit card thing, our minimum payment, we haven't been making that. And that's what's kind of put us in this position. The other thing about uh what Councilmember Baldwin said is I do agree, we have to be good stewards of our our constituents' money. But you can look at that at two ways. Um, you can look at it as, are we being responsible with their monthly cash flow? And are we being responsible with the money they've given us to ensure that they have running water and flushing toilets? And, you know, it's, it's a balance we have to look at there. I think we've been worried too much about the monthly cash flow because that is the immediate thing, and and rightfully so. You know, in in today's times, that is a difficult thing you have to look at every month. No one, no one in my neighborhood cares or sees what thirty years from now looks like for their kids to have running water. But you have to start planning for that now. So, you know, it 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 is going to be a tough decision. Um, when it comes to it, that at some point, we are either going to have to pay this balloon payment because we've been underfunding it on their, on our, on our system, our CIP system, or we're going to fall out of compliance with several different things. And at some point, some other council from now, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, is going to have to increase these rates so much that the burden over twenty years, which is, is going to be difficult, is now going to be impossible for for those families in the future having to deal with such a big increase at one time.
Yeah, Councilmember Watson.
We had a problem a couple through, two, three years ago where the state required us to make some changes to our system, if you recall that. And we raised them then because otherwise, if we didn't comply with their guidelines of all this, they would take over our system and charge what they thought we should be charging our citizens, period. And we'd be out of our hands. So we had to make an immediate change to meet their expectations. So back to a debt service here, it's like you, back to your house again. I can make my house, pay and take care of things, but what about putting a deck on my house or a shop on my house or something? Then you go into debt to help pay for that. And that's what we have to do with some of these um projects moving forward possibly as a debt service for it to make us get through that.
I saw you moved your hands. Did you have a?
Yeah, I feel like I, I feel like I could. Um, I agree with you. I think that it does have to be something that is a long term, way down the road um thought process. I still think that debt is just adding more things, you know, to the future without actually thinking of something that's.
Oh, I'm not in favor of any debt.
Yeah, no, I know. But just in a, in a more long terms, I think if if we had to raise rates, I could say yes to something that would create a long term change, something that's a little, instead of just like putting that Band-Aid on it to then say, here we go, let's just fix that real quick. I I don't, that's harder to say yes to. I, I don't know. I I think if there was some sort of idea where there might be some, I don't know, more long term, long range change.
The rate study, what's the span of the rate study?
Yeah, it's a six year.
It's a six year. Okay, all right. Councilmember McLean.
Pretty much.
Yeah, what, is that a public safety issue if we scratch Granger off of this?
Public safety?
Public health. Is there a public health issue if we just scratch Granger off of this?
Uh, we do have issues with the Clearwell. We do have issues with, have had issues with rats in that facility in the past.
Shut it down?
You cannot just shut it down unless you want to just pay more for Tacoma water.
Right.
It supplies approximately twenty percent of the city's overall supply. So cutting it sets you, you know, turning it off sets you back twenty percent.
Hmm, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, one of the things I think we had talked about when we first got the ARPA funds was that we wanted to put this money towards water and the the CIP uh type deal anyway. So really, this is kind of doing what we were kind of wanting to do, I think, to begin with, before we started nickel and diamond stuff out of that fund a little bit. Um, and so I I think it's a a positive thing and actually following kind of what we wanted to do initially.
I was just going to make a recommendation. Right now, we leave what we have on for the CIP projects because they all have to be done. We leave the ARPA funds in there. We worry about twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, eight, once the rate study gets done and that discussion can happen because depending on the outcome of that discussion, these numbers are going to change, up or down, depending on what that discussion looks like. So what I'd recommend doing is we know, we we wanted to draw your attention to this, knowing that we weren't going to solve it tonight because there is too many sides to that Rubik's Cube to to solve in one night. Um, but wanted to, wanted to bring your attention to it in advance of that rate study so that you can understand the backdrop from the capital side in addition to the to the ongoing side. So unless there's an issue with the first two years, what I'd recommend is do the rate study, and then we'll come back in January with a better picture on the, on the, the last four years.
Okay, and uh following up on that, Mr. Sullivan, we're scheduled to have our public discussion of this on the fifteenth. Are we going to get the data prior to that? Or how, how, so that we can actually read it, study it, know what questions we're going to bring?
I don't believe so. We're going to have him do a PowerPoint presentation. He'll be here to answer any questions you have. Um, but no, I don't, it it it's not that you're making any sort of decisions. We're not asking for that. My guess is this is going to be a lengthy conversation that's not even going to be completed.
Okay.
Last time it took us a year and a half to.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Paul, Paul, do it.
Yeah, are there, because you, you talked about the um three million possibly from the House Resolution seven, 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 six. Um, is there a possibility of getting other grants that we don't have to pay back that we could put towards some of these projects? I mean, these are required projects by the state, and I don't understand how they can put cities into debt and require us to do something that um it's like new regulations that are kind of coming down the pike. And so they create these new regulations, and then we have to play catch up with all of this. So then do they have grants available to help us to pay for that? Without fine print that tells us we have to plant twenty trees um to replace, you know, to cut down one.
Sure, yeah, yeah, definitely. Water projects don't require tree planting, so I think we put there. Um, I I do think, though, it is important to to take note that these projects are not the result of new requirements. These projects are necessary because it's our responsibility to provide a product that's acceptable to our customers. And that's a significant difference here. This, this isn't big government driving something here. Uh, we took on this responsibility to serve the customers in our water service area, and we owe these. we owe these improvements to them. So there are grants available. We have in the past applied for those. There have been, I think, kind of going back a little bit, we've, we've won some of those grants, some of them we haven't. We'll continue to try and, and apply for those. And it also is important to note that if we still are in the running for that $3 million, my understanding is that's a federal appropriation. We won't have to pay that back. That's, that is a grant, it is a money given to the city. So hopefully, hopefully, we're still in contention to get that.
That is indeed correct, but that has also been my continuing question since, since taking office about how as a, as a government, we are implementing, writing for these grants, researching these grants, and, and putting in for them so that we can try to get some of this money that we don't have to pay back.
Yeah.
And so we're going to be putting a lot more effort into that.
Yeah. So we've got possibly $3 million, and then we've got the 4.2 million left in the, in the ARPA funds. So that's $7 million that can go towards, so this would go towards the 12.95.
No, that, that money is already built into this analysis.
So that's already built, including the $3 million?
Yeah, well, it was, it's a million and a half for water and a million and a half for sewer. If you look on the sheet right here, here's the federal appropriation grant at $1.5 million, and here's the $4.2 million in ARPA. So that's already baked in the analysis. So assuming you get $1.5 million from the state, the feds, and you get four point, and you put the $4.2 million in ARPA, we're $3.4 million in the hole by the end of the, by the end of the CIP window.
Councilmember McLean.
Where'd the $13 million come from in the ending fund?
Over time? Is in excess of your. What we don't have money for other than. So that money's just been building up. Some cities have a free funded rate policy. Just been building.
Thanks. And I do see that, that number is actually dependent on the sale of Compass Point property. Have we received that money yet, or is that pending?
They have 30 days, so they're in the process of doing all the closing.
Okay.
Oh, we did sell it?
Yeah.
Were you here?
The council voted for the development agreement and the purchase and sales agreement.
Oh, Compass Point, I was, I was saying.
I was concerned there for a minute, Councilmember Evans.
I knew that, but you were.
There's the REIT technique and interrogations.
No, there's a, there is a wasted.
You made, you made me concerned all of a sudden. Yeah, the REIT property would be another one that would be sold if we could find a buyer.
Okay.
Okay. I think we're at a stopping point. Does anybody else have any further questions tonight?
That's, yeah, five.
The water CIP, we still have four more to go.
Are we ready to move on? Okay, Councilmember McLean.
Thank you, this is hard. Be patient with us, lots to learn. I think one thing I got from Dan is you're the professionals, we're trying to figure it out, so we need all of your help, right?
Oh, there's no such thing as a, as a silly question, anyway.
Challenge accepted. Can, can I open Carrion City?
Move about 2,500 miles south, and yes.
The good news is the sewer CIP is much easier, I think, to get through than the water one.
Okay, well, let's start.
Based with all the projects to include the new dry lines in Cedar View and the federal appropriations, we're expecting that by the end of the 27, 28 biennium, you'd still have $10 million in ending fund balance. Doesn't assume any rate increases. Currently, you're collecting about $20 million in, or $23 million in rates for sewer, $20 million of which is going to your operating expenses, and about $3.5 million is then going to support capital projects. You'll see there are those increases in '25, '26, '27, '28. That's the same thing. There's some debt service that gets expired by then. So there's more rate left that goes back into the capital side or into the ending fund balance. We've also shown in there the East Town latecomer payments. One positive outcome of the East Town development, or the Peak 410 Development Agreement is when the sewer, when the city council built the East Town lift station, they did a 20-year CI, a 20-year latecomer agreement back in 2013, and so that would be valid through 2033. The biggest challenge to collecting on that was the fact that we didn't have the sewer backbone. But Chris, through the Peak 410 Development Agreement, will be building that sewer backbone. So all of the development out there now has had to sign an agreement to connect. And so when the, the line goes live, they have six months to connect and pay their latecomers agreement. And then also, Chris, he'll be paying part of the latecomers agreement as part of his project.
And that would be Chris.
There.
Just approved.
Yep. So you'll see that the, there's about a million, a little over a million dollars in latecomers agreement that's going back into FUD, and that's to reimburse the city for the construction of the East Town Lift Station back, that was done back in 2013, 2015.
Hey, Councilmember Evans, I saw you raised.
Oh, no, no, it wasn't.
So this one, I think, is pretty straightforward unless there's any questions about a specific project.
Oh, Councilmember Swam.
And I don't know if it makes any difference right now, per se, because, you know, I have concerns over the future agreement with Sumner and how we treat capital improvements and how we pay or what our portion is on that, right? So I see some of those are kind of in here for the Sumner Bio Solids Upgrade as an example, right? That's, and again, I don't think it makes any difference right now because I don't think that we frankly have to pay for that, you know? Maybe we would want to, but it depends on how that is. Because, you know, we pay for capacity improvements down there, which is pretty straightforward. But when it comes to actually, like, they need a new roof, that's kind of their thing. But yet, of course, obviously, we pay for service down there, so, you know?
Well, Councilmember Swam, and I can promise you that I'm going to be having a fairly robust discussion with Ms. Robertson, hopefully before the end of the week, maybe, maybe next Tuesday, if, as far as how this goes. But that is one of the things that we will be addressing.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it's a great partnership we have with Sumner. We obviously need to continue that. We need to be, you know, fair and equitable on how we use that facility. So that's always my goal, make sure that, you know, everybody's on the same page there.
Okay. Anything else? Anything further, Councilmember McLean?
So where is the dryer in here?
That's part of the Bio Solids Upgrade project. Oh, is that what that is?
I thought it was bigger than 500,000, though. But it was.
It, it is actually going out across several bienniums. The total investment's going to be over $6 million. It's going to be seven and a half-ish, something like that.
Three point, it's 385,000 in the next biennium, and then 3.5 million in '25, '26, and 3.2 million in '27, '28.
Councilmember Fullerton, I saw you raised your hand.
Oh, I don't think so.
Oh, okay.
I do say, if you're renting a house and the roof needs to be replaced, the renter doesn't pay for that, the homeowner does.
No, that's quite true.
You're leased.
I'm in a tenant negotiation right now with my company lease and the, the C pays for it in commercial sides of things.
Yeah, but now they have a whole Act, Landlord Tenant Act that deals with that. All right, any, any further discussion on this matter so that we can move on? All right, next item, please.
Stormwater is another one that has problems, so we, I expected to be some conversations. So this is the required improvements that we need to make into our stormwater system. One, to make sure that we stay in compliance with the requirements for our MS4 system, which is our, all those street drains and drainage systems that we have throughout the city, but also to address flooding throughout the city. Some things to draw your attention to, I, I need to get with Sherry to see if we have a bond fund balance requirement on this one, so that could affect the, and sewer, so that could affect the numbers. But this one, because it's a little closer on the line, could have an impact. I would say the two things that, as you get into talking about rates, currently, the stormwater operation is not being covered by the rates. So as you can see down on, lying down here on the bottom line where it has the rates line, it's actually negative. Because right now, the rates that the city is collecting is underfunding the operation to the tune of about $350,000 a year. So every year, you're pulling $350,000 out of your ending fund balance to cover ongoing operational cost. When all the projects that get built need to be built, you're looking at a total negative by the end of the six years of about $4 million. So there does need to be some adjustments in rates. As I said, right now, you're collecting about $3.9 million in rates every year, but your cost is about $4.2 million a year. So every year, you're taking away from your ending fund balance that's used for capital to pay for ongoing expenses. So once we do all the improvements, subtract out the rate deduct, and add in the MPDS loans and grants, we're still probably by '25, '26 biennium, going to be running negative. I know it shows a positive of about 304,000, but as Sherry pointed out, we haven't pulled out the bond minimums yet, so that, I have to get those numbers. And we knew that that was still an issue that would still, was still in play. So this was one, when, yeah, when FCS comes back on the rates, we are going to be running negative by the end of, the end of the next two-year biennium.
And with what we have on the screen, and I'm sorry, I'll defer just sort of, but Mr. Johnstone, the Stormwater Swale Retrofit Program seems to be a big bugaboo on, on there. Could you explain what that is and, and why we have to have so much money towards it?
Yeah, so the Swale Retrofit Program is, is essentially a process to, it's due to water quality. So we go throughout the city, all of the swales and ditches that currently we have in our inventory need to be upgraded in order to provide for wa, wa, excuse me, water quality treatment for our stormwater runoff, because there are certain requirements we need to make there. So that's what that project is doing.
And is that in conjunction with our state ecological departments that like salmon and, and, okay, Councilmember Baldwin.
Are bond minimums normally in the $500,000 range, or do they just vary based on the bond?
So it depends on your bond covenants and bond restrictions.
Okay.
It, it won't be 500,000 for this fund. I believe it's 147,000.
Gotcha. Okay, okay.
Okay, any, oh, Councilmember McLean.
So we're, we're running about $175,000 a year under operations, not 350.
Yeah, ours is by biennium, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the biennium's 350.
Thank you, thank you for the correction, yeah, you're correct.
Right.
And since that's amazingly consistent over the next six years, is that, that simply a projection? We don't know about unforeseeable events?
Correct, it doesn't take into account unforeseeable events.
Doesn't? Dang it.
Yeah, sorry. It is, it, it assumes, it assumes a two, assumes a two to, two to 4% increase in the operational expenses and, but there could be other things that, that change it. But, and it doesn't assume any rate increase. So rate increases, I mean, there's lots of variables. That's why we're trying to project as best we can to give you as much information as you can to make the best-informed decision. So we have tried to inflate these things over time to account for normal inflation. No one would have predicted an eight and a half, nine percent that we've seen.
I appreciate that. Oh, Councilmember Swam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is one I'm trying to kind of get my head around, this little one here, because I'm hearing that our maintenance and operations are spending more than is what's coming in in kind of that category, but our capital improvement are not being funded is, it's kind of, there's all, there's a stormwater fund or what have you, an enterprise fund, right? And it's kind of logically divided up into two components?
It's not. Your fund is one fund, right? The only thing that's restricted within that fund are your SDCs.
Okay.
Everything else has gone to the ending fund balance. So you started, I believe it was last year, I told you, you guys were going to be going in the red on operations versus revenue. I'm sorry, last budget cycle.
We are all a city, Ms. Ryerson, you're going into the red with us.
She's on the same bus, but at least she told us.
I don't live here. I, I can't tell you how my city works, you know, I have no idea. I can tell you how well your city works, though. And I believe it was the last budget cycle, we talked about that. We talked about potentially looking at raising the rates during the next rate study. So it was in between rate studies. I believe we haven't raised these rates in at least eight years. My understanding, one of my staff members was saying that they actually pay in Buckley $30 or $60, I can't remember what she told me today, $30 or $60 for monthly storm in Buckley. We're paying 14.
Okay. Well, let's move on.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes, Councilmember.
We'll take a 10-minute break, please.
Oh, yes. And it's a workshop suspending the rules, let's just take a break.
Are we alone to go to the house?
I figured it was, are we off the record?
No, I just go and scream.
I've been wondering.
They turn the shower on, and then you just scream into the closet there.
Didn't it just fall out of the sky and go directly into the stream?
According to the Department of.
Oh, I wanted to do that yesterday.
Yeah.
So I thought these were CIP projects that we were talking about or what?
The, the road, the road maintenance projects overlays, um, reach construction, chip seal, crosswalk improvements and sidewalk improvements. They are ongoing expenses, but because they are capital improvements, they're part of your CIP, even though they're more of a maintenance type project because they're improving or making improvements to the infrastructure.
And which ones are the?
So that would be the sidewalk improvements, crosswalk improvements, street reconstruction, chip seal and overlay program.
Yeah, but again, the sidewalk improvement, is that a maintenance project or is that a?
It's a.
Primarily at this point, we're, we're using those funds to plug gaps in the existing sidewalk systems and building new sidewalk where there currently isn't any. And yes, some of our ADA improvements will be coming out of those two different line items as well. So it's a, it's a number of different items.
Are we caught up on our potholes?
Yeah, they do an excellent job on that. Are there any potholes?
I don't think so.
We're really looking at like less than a half mile of sidewalk, right?
Sorry, could you repeat that?
We're looking at less than a half mile per biennium.
Roughly.
Yeah.
Well, the 190th, yeah. How, how long is the 190th?
Well, it's basically a million dollars a mile for sidewalk.
Gotcha.
So half a million over two years, we're only doing about a quarter mile per year.
Depends. Yeah, there's, there are some things that play into that, but that's a good rough approximation.
Well, but is it generally though, the, the maintenance things get done as a priority? And then if there's money left over, then the improvement projects could possibly be done, right?
We, we do try and focus on what needs to be done in order to just keep the existing system running. Um, it's, it's, it just varies. It depends on what the needs are. Um, at this time, we've chosen to make, uh, you know, the maintenance and operational related items, the priority.
Yeah, right. And I would hope that the council's supportive on that type of thing, making sure that we maintain a, a maintenance operation level to maintain the system, right? So we don't, you know, you, you have to kind of do that as a priority or not, right?
Right, but we're looking at CIP stuff. What you're talking about is.
No, see, because they're mixed.
Yeah. So the CIP includes like your, your, your overlay program is a CIP project, even though it's also a maintenance project, the same with, uh, street reconstruction and oh, and the chip seal. Those are all extending the useful life of a, a capital project. So therefore it's a CIP project, but it's also a maintenance project because you're extending the life of that existing facility.
So is the fund on that, is that a CIP fund or is that a?
CIP.
Okay. So what we are looking at is all CIP regardless of maintenance tag versus a truly capital.
Whether it's a new facility or upgrading an existing facility or maintaining things.
All the maintenance stuff that council member Swatman is talking about would be covered under MNO on the general.
No, it's all in here. It's in here. So all of the. Yeah. What are you? So anytime we're fixing a sidewalk, fixing the street, it goes into the capital side. These are the funds that we're using. So if a, if a sidewalk's all broken up and damaged and we have to go out there and pour new sidewalk, it comes out of the sidewalk fund and the CIP.
There is no MNO fund for, for this particular.
It's out of your general.
Okay.
That supports all of his operations, maintenance or maintenance.
Like street sweeping and?
This is technically considered. In the useful life of the sidewalk.
Yeah.
So this is the CIP.
Okay.
And right now the revenue source the council has directed to the CIP for roads is mainly the REIT funds. And then we've got the traffic impact fees, but that can't be used for overlays and stuff like that. That has to be for capacity adding projects. So I guess getting back to our earlier discussion, this is the early warning flag that in the next six years, your street fund is going to be facing the same problem that your water and sewer funds or water and stormwater funds are facing is that the revenue sources that are used to run those programs are falling behind the cost to run the program.
So just to add to that too, though, one of the, one of the things that we're really trying to do now, uh, obviously we live in unprecedented times and we've seen some programs come out of the federal government that, uh, may be helpful in this area. The programs such as Safe Streets for All, uh, you know, the bipartisan infrastructure law, available a lot of money over the next five years for these types of efforts. And so we're going to really try and get out there and do the applications and, and get some of that money here into Bonnie Lake. So hopefully we can offset some of this, but I think at best what we're doing is just kind of pushing it further down the road.
Would this be, I'm sorry, would, would this be a direct appeal to the, uh, to the feds or do we have to go through the county or the state and have them do it and then us?
I think, I think much of this money ends up getting administered, excuse me, administered through local programs in Washtot. So we would go through the state.
Okay, uh, council member. On, on the, uh, pending deficit is, are you able to pinpoint, is it due to, uh, TIF fees not being where they need to be or REIT or is it a combination of both? Like with the other stuff, we can put our finger on, we didn't raise water rates.
It's more of a lack of the REIT type revenue. So as I said, your, your biennium expenditure for your kind of maintenance type extending the life type project, which is your sidewalk improvement money, your crosswalk improvement money, street reconstruction, chip seal and overlay is running you about two and a half to 2.7 million dollars a biennium. Your REIT revenue, which is your principal revenue source to fund that is 1.3 million a biennium. So every biennium you're running right now, about a million and a half behind your expenditures. And the way to make, the way it's been made up is we're just been spending down ending fund balance.
And I, I would just add to that quickly that the traffic impact fees, um, are, are need to be evaluated. They are low. Uh, you'll hear consultants joke that Bonnie Lake is a bargain compared to, uh, some other cities in the area. We, we do need to evaluate that and make sure that we are charging what is appropriate for our community.
And that fee, is that on residential new construction or, or just commercial?
Every new construction.
Every new construction. Okay.
And we will be doing a TIF traffic impact fee rate study as part of the comprehensive plan update, um, during the 23, 24 biennium.
Are with, with the sale of Compass Point and the span of that build out being over the span of this six-year biennium look ahead, are we, are we projecting that into it?
Where the, the, the Compass Point build out probably will not have a good, have a huge impact on our TIF cash flow because they're, they're building the roundabout, which they're getting basically a credit that's going to wipe out their TIF fee, but they're also wiping a project off the TIF list, which will change the calculation of what projects we have left to pay for with traffic impact fees. So it's kind of a yes, but no, it's not money you'll see in here. It's money you will see different in the rate study because there's a project that will come off, uh, when we do that rate study.
And, and just to share with everyone, the, the TIF is a regressive B, right? As we build out more, the availability of inventory to build out is less. So over time that, that fee structure will shrink.
Correct.
And, and unlike the REIT where as long as you're still selling homes, not necessarily building homes, you're still generating that.
Yeah. As long as, as long as you're selling homes and then, you know, when you have big housing booms for price like we are right now, you'll collect more REIT and then you'll have lean years where you collect less REIT.
So really, I mean, long-term, we need to be, I mean, short-term, we need to be thinking long-term about a replacement revenue for the TIF beyond six years from now.
Yeah, for both, because also the TIF can't go to your maintenance side. So even if we build out every TIF project and we're still collecting TIF money for things, the, the first four, the first four improvements on this list can't be used with TIF funds. So like I said, this was me raising the early warning flag that says we're fine right now, but in six years from now.
That was there somewhere. I had the card.
Or, or some funding revenue source.
If you can get us off of the sound transit RTA tax, then I will certainly consider a TDD.
So once again, I can't solve it. I just, based on earlier conversations, I wanted to place the red flag on this one to give you the early warning to say, not a problem right now, six years. Ryan and I will be here giving you the same dire news about the street fund that we gave you about the water fund. I'm assuming Ryan, I'm assuming Ryan, I'm assuming Ryan and I'll still be here in six years. Um, so, but like I said, I just wanted to raise it. It's not an issue that we have to solve tonight or during the CIP, but something that the council should have on its work plan over the next two to four years to begin to identify a solution.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Too big to fail.
Well played.
Non-negotiable.
All right.
Um.
Any further?
Not, not on the streets. No.
Um, all right.
So the, the park fund, um, this one is, you'll see there's no projects in 25, 26 or 27, 28. That was intentional because we're doing the new parks plan. Um, and that will be, will spell out what those projects need to be. We didn't want to forecast projects that may or may not be included. Um, we are doing a park impact fee rate study, which will look at both commercial and residential park impact fees. Uh, the, the peak 14 development project will be paying park impact fees, um, assuming that the rates are adopted before their building permits are issued.
How'd you swing that?
They're not vested to rates. They're not vested to fees.
No, no, I thought it was mostly, uh, um, parking impacts for residential.
Um, when we talked to FCS group, they have begun to do this and have formulas and analysis where they can document and be able to support both residential and corporate. Um, the big project here, and this is why this one's kind of weird. There's a 6.25 million dollar project for the next segment of Fiddle Creek Trail. This is the one that Ryan had briefed the council on back this summer. Um, we are applying for a 4.2 million dollar grant to cover that project. Um, but 200, there's about $2 million, um, that we will have to, to cover, um, which is what drops the ending fund balance in this biennium to $480,000.
Yeah, this is not, this is not on our.
Yeah. And that's because this was, this is one of those things where I think there's some things that got lost in translation. Sherry and I have been talking about this. This was the one that Ryan briefed the council on back in.
Yeah, it was a couple of months ago. We applied through the pet and bike program.
Our packet has 3.726 on that line where you have 8.66.
Yeah, there, that's, that was where, like I said, we're trying to, to get all this squared away and there's multiple people looking at it. The number we had in there was for the 2B program, which is the project that we just completed. This was for 3A. So we wanted to reckon, at least in the PowerPoint presentation, recommend the right number, which is 6.2 million. That being said, if we don't get the grant, we don't do the project. So I don't know how to capitalize and show that it balances knowing that we won't beat a project if we don't get the grant. Yeah.
Yeah. I was.
And we can do that.
Yeah, I was just gonna dovetail into what, uh, Sherry was saying, timing of the grant. Uh, legislature will make a recommendation or provide the recommended projects to the governor's office in December and award letters aren't until next June. So I think the timeline lends itself well to the direction that Sherry's.
But what we'll do for the budget then is we'll pull the 6.2 million dollar project and also the 4.2 bill, the 4.2 million dollar grant, which means everything balances.
How does it balance?
If I pull out a 4.2 million, a 6.2 million dollar project and I pull out a 4.2 million dollar grant, I have $2 million ahead. Correct.
Is the, is the grant something we've already been awarded?
No.
No.
Okay.
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 Uh, council member Baldwin or Fuller, then I saw your hands moving. Did you have?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I were, yeah, we're also trying to decipher, um, the information. So you're saying that segment 2B.
Is already done. That's the one that runs.
Yeah. Get about that. And then there's a line item there you said that is 6.2 million?
Yeah, that's the, the Fiddle Creek segment 3A.
So that would be the extension that continues the trail north across the property we commonly call the thumb, um, up to Church Lake Road.
But this is what Sherry is recommending that we do as a budget.
Correct.
Okay. No, just joking. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said budget amendment.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, and then the other thing that's on here is there is the Allen York Park multi-sport complex. And this one, we've had lots of discussions, why the numbers are different. There are two contract amendments coming to the city council, the end of this month, beginning of December, um, related to this project. This amount assumes the council approves those contract amendments. So this is the money that's currently authorized for the budget plus an additional, let's say million?
Hmm, rough. For to get through, what is concluded in the budget is, yeah, the rollover was the, I think was that amount. Yeah, I think it was about 200,000.
Yeah.
Not necessarily an increase over it, just.
No, you'll get the request for increase. I believe it's in.
Yeah, I think it's two.
Was it my negligence and why I haven't seen what is the contract amendments on anything? Or can you send me something so that I know what we're trying to do to? Ah, gotcha.
And, and that's why I'm saying, that's why this is a little different because we're, we're, we're assuming that those contract amendments get approved because the project needs to be finished, but there's that whole process this year that would go on. Uh, and then it does include the five, the $525,000 that the council approved through the decision card process a couple of weeks ago, or the conversion of the boat trailer parking lot at Allen York Park.
So if I might, because CDC did touch on that, um, field for conversion concept, right? Um, I, I think there was agreement within the council prior to, you know, allocating funding, but we were, some of us were unsure that it would, you know, completely eliminate the field for, that's a possibility, but there may be other things that are going to work with, with how the public works is configured, just kind of an FYI, I think, you know, again, because the CDC, you know, staff was like, oh no, we're gonna, that was a, you know, ballfield four, we're putting a big X on it and we're going to pave that whole thing over. But so, you know, again, that's kind of a, it's still much of a study to come back on how we configure that parking, I think is FYI.
So just to, just to clarify too, the decision card that the council requested and we brought forward was for converting the field, the softball field to a parking lot. So that's what was provided and what was voted on. Discussion we had at CDC this evening, uh, we discussed, uh, and what was brought to our attention was the idea that perhaps the Public Works Center site would be a better place for parking. So staff is going to really need some clarification here on the direction that council wants to go. Just know that if we change locations, we're changing that number too. Whether it's up or down, I don't know until I know where it is. We're talking about putting a parking lot.
Right, yeah, exactly, yeah.
The fact that the, um, Public Works is right there on a wetland that hasn't been considered yet is.
Yeah.
Or, oh, this customer.
It's already all asphalted, right?
Yeah, I, I mean, we're going to have to do, go through the SEPA, uh, process regardless. Um, if you're staying within the bounds of the current paved surface, I don't see that we would have huge issues, but if we were to get outside of that, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we start to get outside of that and move further east, um, into that sensitive area, then we could have some issues.
Definitely, yeah. And I think that was kind of the, what was that the message? That we have the funding. We wanted the funding kind of allocated-ish there, but we don't, we're unclear on what the outcome would be.
So I guess the, the request that we would have from the council, we make sure we deliver the right process, the right project is, does the council, and I guess this is just a consensus knot of the head, so that we can prepare the budget with the right thing, is, is it convert field four into trailer parking or is it add additional trailer parking at Allen York Park?
It's add parking in that area, right? That was the concept. And, and maybe that does, and maybe that's the most practical thing to do. It's, hey, you know, you're going to be able to convert this field for $200,000 and you're done.
Well, the decision card, the decision card that was approved was go take out field four.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, it was, no, well, it was add parking spots.
By, by getting rid of.
Well, however you did that, I thought was open, right?
No.
Yeah, the, the direction.
Paving in, paving in.
Why, why would you, you know, that's part of the discussion, right? Why would you have a multimillion dollar field that you want to pave over for parking for a few folks when, you know, you may be able to do it in a different way, provide the same level of parking?
Well, if you look at, if you look at this section here, uh, getting rid of the, um, Public Works Department is not nearly as much parking.
That's right. We don't, we haven't done that kind of a, uh, analysis.
Right. And you're, you also don't know that you need that whole field either, right? I mean, you could put the whole field out there and then, and then not have it used. I think prudence would dictate that you incrementally add parking where judiciously where we can financially and space-wise and try to maintain. For me, in my brain, when I voted for that, I thought we were going to try to reasonably maintain some use of the ballfield part. These ballfields are hard to come by. I thought we were going to try to creep into the outer field. And then I, I also thought we had always talked about the parking where the Public Works Center was. So those were the two things. And for me, I'm like, we need the money there, get the money there. Now let staff figure out what a good way to go was. So.
What we talked about in public safety was almost like a three-tiered thing. One was the, the immediate change that ballfield four parking.
Done.
Boat parking.
Check. It's done.
Phase two, look at, um, increasing that boat parking in, in ballfield four.
Right.
Phase three, look at what, um, is available after Public Works leaves as either additional parking or some sort of like a paid lot that would be able to, um, have the revenues instead of having the, the bollards, you know, coming in, you pay and that's your, you know, if you're parking your boat there, presumably you've launched your boat and that was the, the system we, mechanism we talked about in, in public safety for that. But that was a, uh, an immediate, a short-term and a long-term project goal being four plus years out on the public work side of things.
Fabulous. Uh, what's between these ears is there's a ballfield there now and it's going to cost millions of dollars to put another ballfield someplace else. So is there a way to do this in a way so that somehow part of that ballfield is there usable? It doesn't have to be huge, right?
Potentially, but I mean, you're also looking at the 6.4 million we just built for additional ballfields across the street. Yeah. So, I mean, you can keep it, but you're also losing your parking because that's going to be boat parking. So, you know.
As.
I think our main thing with it is that, um, you know, we do have these, like you're, like you're saying, right? There are, um, these new ballfields and our, I'm telling you guys, our biggest complaint, and it's big, is boat trailer parking. It is a complaint not just with, um, boaters, but the local residents and they want it fixed and changed.
Oh, yeah.
And so, um, that is why we made the decision that as far as, especially because it's limited space there at Allen York, we looked, it was slim pickings and the ballfield for it was definitely, that was on the chopping block.
And I know Ryan mentioned something, but I mean, hearing the discussions now, I mean, I don't, it may not have even been in the right committee. I don't know where public safety falls in that, where maybe it falls more under CDC.
I think we're doing both of it, right? Just, just like the parking thing that we shoved over to public safety again to get their input.
Council member wants.
And for our discussion tonight at CDC, we want to have as much parking and public works area as you planned on with the ballfield over there. It's not going to limit that. So we want to take care of two things. Demand for ballfields is huge. Now with our new ballfield out there and others, so we have more people coming here. And I want to take care of the small summer people with their boats. We have ballfields most of the year throughout. If we can get that kind of parking availability, like works, and we talked about why companies looking things over on, on the ground and see what makes sense, because we have lots of questions about where we can go. If we can do that and get she the same amount of parking, then that's something we consider. If we can't do it, then yeah, that's probably the best thing we should do is ballpark four and we can pave it over.
Do we know how much boat parking we need?
Well, we were targeted at, what did we say? Like 100 spots or something like that? Yeah, that's our kind of initial.
And that's including the increased space that Chief was talking about, um, modern vehicles and our modern, and our modern trailers.
But maybe that study when it comes back too, it'll be helpful on identifying a good number too.
Yeah. So it was like, um, always the plan was to turn ballpark four into parking because you don't have parking for that ballpark anyway now because the parking lot that's there has already been repaved and is now for boat launch parking.
Right.
And.
Parking may be the parking for Public Works, right?
That wouldn't be boat.
That would be the.
All year round either.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's. You just have to look at options really.
Though, I mean, you're not going to park there in ballpark four and then walk up to, why would you even go to Public Works if there's nothing there but a flattened parking lot that can be converted into more boat parking?
But that's just, you know, there's, there's options, right? I think, I think all options.
Is there, is there a walking path through the woods that would take you to ballpark four?
All right, I believe Mr. Johnston does that video.
Ju- just a little bit of background, uh, based on some of the comments I heard. Uh, the, the first is, is, is obviously we are already spending millions of dollars on a new ballfield. Uh, at the end of the day, if you convert field four to a parking lot, you're also building a new field. There's been no net change in the number of fields available at Allen York Park. But on top of that, as the professionals in the room, I would make the recommendation that you not build any more ballfields at Allen York Park. And I know that that's been made clear before and I'm going to say it again so that it is heard. Midtown is where the ballfields should be going.
Right.
And I just want to make that clear so that it's on the record.
You got my ticket. Yeah, we need to provide parking for the ballparks that we do have as well as the boat launch. And we've added 120 spaces with the new field that's getting put in. And then we're now converting ballpark four into parking for the boat launch, which makes the most sense because it's the closest to the boat launch. And then we can always have additional parking if we need it later on down the road using the old, um, Public Works Department as well as the decant station, which can add probably another 30 cars possibly, but not boat launch. And then, um, then eventually if we have new fields, that's, that's what all the studies are for is to create the new fields out at midtown, which would also include hopefully lots and lots of parking when we get the new fields.
Ms. Ryerson has.
Uh, since this is already in the budget the way it is, I would recommend moving forward with the budget portion, continuing your conversation in December, January to determine what it is you want to do and at what cost.
Okay. Oh, uh, council member.
Well, it just, it feels like, uh, you know, we voted on the ballpark for conversion and that's what we voted on. So it just seems kind of weird to change it midstream and go, oh yeah, let's talk about this later. Uh, we, we, this is a necessity. This needs to get taken care of with this budget. Yeah.
That is the budget.
We, we voted on a decision card to put money aside for the ballpark for conversion, but until you see the plan and understand all the impact, I hadn't voted on that. I voted on, yes, put, put money in for the budget because we got to do parking, right? But until you see it and understand it, right?
Yeah, the board is happy to give you the parking spaces. How we do it is the thing, right? I mean, we want to make sure to get the parking spaces. What we have to do is what we need to consider, you know? We need that, that we're going to get the parking spaces.
Yeah.
One way or another.
We definitely need them for the summer. It's coming fast.
You don't have them that summer.
We'll, we'll get a, um, I'll, you know, could you share with class, no. Um, all right.
And just to take Jason's red flag here.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know who could have predicted we were going to be in the red, but, um, we are and it's minimally increasing year after year. So, um, I would imagine that a secondary revenue or tertiary revenue source for.
There needs to be more revenues for parks. The only reason this thing is balancing is because there's no projects.
Zero projects, yeah.
Yeah. So the minute the new, and we did that intentionally because we didn't know what the, the plan was going to say. The end of this year, you'll have a new parks plan. It will identify all the projects. It'll identify the revenues from park impact fees from the new rates. Council will need to make decisions and then we'll start building CIPs.
We'll cut them in half and then we'll deal with it later.
We'll, we'll deal with that. We'll, but that's the only reason it's, but you're right. There is a red flag on this fund as well. There is not enough money coming in through park impact fees and REIT to pay for the park improvements that the city council wants to make.
No, I mean, if we do zero projects over the next 10 bienniums, 20 years, then we'll have maybe $40 million in there to build a. then we'll have maybe $40 million in there to build a park at Midtown.
You, you gotta have that funding source so you can incur that debt that you wanted to do, right?
Oh, yeah. I've, I've talked about that funding source where you can make a bond.
There was a large amount of debt that we were.
At the end of next year.
What, what's the one on the one? I don't understand, understand the Allen York multi-park complex because I heard a $200,000 kind of, we have 1.5.
From last year or what will be.
Yeah, it's the rollover.
Oh, that we didn't spend.
Basically the rollover from this year, assuming the council approves the contract amendments.
A couple hundred thousand dollars. So it's not new allocation per se. Some of it is a couple hundred thousand dollars or something, okay. And then the Fennel Creek Trail was in there, but the parks, trails and open space plan, I thought we already had a parks plan that we.
You signed the contract and we'll be spending all the money pretty much in the next biennium.
Yay.
Madam Clerk or Mr. Vodapich, when does the Parks Commission meet next year?
Worthless thing.
Or Jason, would you know?
Wednesday? Probably not till next year.
Okay. Are we, and my apologies for not keeping up with this on, on that, are we full on the Parks Commission?
Couple months ago, we had a council meeting and we went over.
Yes.
And a merge.
Okay.
And the, the Planning Commission would assume those responsibilities because they're overlapped anyway. So everything the Park Commission looks at, because it's also part of the comp plan, the Planning Commission has to look at. So you're having two commissions look at the same work and making recommendations.
And so when does the Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission meets every, the first Monday of every month. We're waiting to do the, that's why we're saying that till January. The council takes action on this ordinance that's coming forward and then all of this will be running through the Planning Commission.
Would you mind sending me an invitation for that?
To the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right. Are we ready to move on next?
The last one is the general government. It basically is mainly done biennium, biennium. I keep, we keep trying to find projects that might go in those outer bienniums. But most of these are all the projects that the council just approved by decision card.
Okay. Any discussion? Commentary, Councilmember Reynolds?
Wasn't it 60,000 for the senior center or was it only 30? I thought it was, it was 30 and 30.
Oh, it's 60, okay.
We've been here twice. There's indoor and outdoor, right?
Oh, no, they have it.
Oh, because it was over two years.
It's supposed to be here in here. Oh, no, it's on.
We can fix that.
This is a two.
Okay. Anything further? Uh, Mr. Johnstone?
I was just going to say, if, if we were at the end of it, I just wanted to acknowledge Jason's effort and our assistant planner, Russ Schaub's effort. We were originally planning on presenting this on November 15th. And when we were told that it would actually be this Tuesday instead, he pulled a, a really late night with Russ to get what you have in front of you prepared. So some of the things here where it may need a little bit of tweaking, forgive us a little bit, is he had a, had a late night. We were, I was reviewing stuff from home and.
I think we got there like 11:30.
Big thanks to him for pulling this together.
Thank you, Jason.
Well, like I say, I have to give the shout out to Russ. He, he did a lot of the typing and I did a lot of the.
Ms. Ryerson, if you could put in the budget. No do's.
So all I was going to say in kind of conclusion is the next steps is on your packet next week will be a council resolution. Two, and that was included in your packet tonight, which will do, will do three things. One, it'll say, Sherry, include the numbers and we're going to, her and I will get together and make sure they're right in your budget document that the council will adopt. Two, we're taking an official stance of putting the 4.2 million in ARPA to the water fund. And then the third is bring back this thing in January so we can officially adopt the six-year CIP. So that resolution will be on the city council agenda.
That sounds good. Okay. Ding, no more business. We're adjourned. Is that your alarm to go?
Yes.